Call the meeting to order, please stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the meetings held May 28th and June 5th, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign, that motion carries. And we have two people wishing to address the board on non-agenda item. Both are having to do with the elementary schedule and that change. So you'll have five minutes each. And when you, when you get to the microphone, please give us your name and your home address, please. So we'll start out with Tony Martinet.
Tony Martinet, 46220 West Shore Place, Hartford, South Dakota. I am here today as the SFEA president as well. I just wanted to let you know, members have informed me that committees have been formed in order to make decisions about needed reductions in curriculum for art, music, and PE because of a reduction in minutes to each individual class. In-service time on May 28th was given to start this process. I'm just asking that the board consider what the threshold is for when a reduction of curriculum moves out of being a simple modification to the curriculum. I have no idea what that would look like or what that is, so just something to make a comment on.
Okay, thank you. And Brett Cooper, same thing, if you give your name and your address, please.
Hello, I'm Brett Cooper, my address is 2508 South Judy Avenue here in Sioux Falls. Members of the board, I want to first thank you for your respectful consideration during the past few months in regards to discussions surrounding the proposed fine arts schedule, which includes PE and library. It appears as though a decision to cut substantial amounts of instruction time to next year's schedule is quite final. I'm speaking to you this evening to request that members of the board take up this issue in an effort to not let this decision pass without proper discussion and examination. I'm to understand it's a proposed 15% cut to instruction time, which is beyond a scheduling issue, to reiterate what Tony had just mentioned, and now is a curriculum issue which should be decided by the board. A number of friends and colleagues of mine who are fine arts teachers in the district, they spent their final end of semester teacher workday deciding what to cut from their curriculum from the next year. And I believe it will be a true disappointment and disservice to students and staff if curriculum will be compromised because of this potential decision. Allowing instructors to only teach 85% of their curriculum is setting them up for literally B-grade work. I'm very proud and great, excuse me, proud of and grateful for the A-quality educational philosophies and practices that permeate the district. I urge you all to do everything in your power to ensure that this quality is continued in the future. If we don't, the district will cease to remain competitive, and I believe that more severe issues are likely to follow. Thank you for your time and for allowing me to speak.
All right, we'll move on. Could I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, that motion carries, and good news report.
Well? Here we are. I'm gonna hope this pops up here. It looks like maybe we lost our connection. No, we'll go back this way. Okay, good evening. Today marks two weeks of summer freedom for students in the Sioux Falls School District, and some might imagine that our schools are sitting empty right now, breathing a sigh of relief after all those kids have gone home, but that really couldn't be further from the truth. Tonight, we're taking a snapshot of summer learning to showcase some of the activities going on in our schools that extend the learning throughout the summer months. And because there are so many programs, I broke them down into elementary, middle, and high school as they pertain to what level students would be at as they participate. So in the elementary schools, we have pre-K through 5th grade programs that really focus on academic enrichment, summer care, and optional experiences. So here, just to highlight a few. Ready to Start is a program for pre-K students, 90 of them, who will spend five weeks in our school learning what it means to be a kindergartner. And we're thankful to our partner, United Way, for some funding to get that, those kids off to a great start. We have Extended School Year, 100 students participating at JFK and 114 at Harvey Dunn. These are students who have IEPs that indicate that they have additional need for learning throughout the summer months. We have Summer Climb, that's a program that now I believe is in its fourth year at LBA Hawthorne in Hayward, 175 students there. Elementary Immersion Summer School, 100 students going on field trips, fishing at Kovalake, bowling, having lots of experiences, and plenty of academic time as well. I was over there last week, and students are learning in the classroom but having great experiences as well to help reinforce some of that vocabulary that they're picking up on as English learners. We have an elementary migrant camp, a day camp for 170 students. 88 students in our Bridges program are participating in continuing their behavior program throughout the summer. One of their reinforcements is horseback riding and the therapeutic relief that that brings if we have good behavior, and then students can benefit from assisting in horseback riding or participating in horseback riding. Kids Inc. Summer Program, we have 444 children, K through 5, at Cleveland, Discovery, Eugene Field, and Laura Wilder. Those are programs that are very popular over the summer months and needed, necessary for those families who have Kids Inc. throughout the school year, after school, and need that additional care throughout the summer months. So there's a lot of focused learning time going on there, in addition to lots of great field trips and experiences for those students as well. We have summer music lessons, 86 students enrolled. We have three piano teachers, two guitar teachers, one clarinet teacher at four locations throughout the school district. That continues to be a very popular program through community education. Youth Summer Camps, 40 students are participating in Intro to Judo, Metals Theater, and Stained Glass. And then, of course, very popular over the summer months is Supersitters, and that's to get our pre-teens certified as babysitters who can go out and provide the safe care for families in the evenings. Here is a picture of that Elementary Immersion Summer School that I attended the other day. Upper left-hand corner, the young lady who is bending down talking to students as they're having their breakfast. Great story about her and one that I hope to focus on in the coming year. Her name is Melanie, or I'm sorry, Naomi Blank, and she arrived here as a refugee in 2nd grade as a nine-year-old. And she knew she wanted to be a teacher, and now she is teaching at the Elementary Immersion Center. So being able to connect with those students and truly understand what their fears might be, what their satisfaction might be, what they need to learn through the process. So what a, what a fun example that she is, and one that I hope, I told her she has to be the poster child for our high school classes where students are taking that teacher pathway. And she said, "I'd be happy to do that." So I look forward to telling her story a little bit more through the, through the school year. At middle school, we have 6th through 8th grade students involved in academic enrichment and optional experiences as well. We have Middle School Migrant Camp, where 50 students are participating, 100 Middle School Immersion students. ELL CTE Summer School, that is specifically for 45 students to attend a camp out at the CTE Academy and give them the experiences that, you know, in everything from culinary arts to media to healthcare. And we'll see some photos of that as well. And then the broader CTE Summer Camps for any student in the district who would like to participate. And, you know, we hear from our business community that workforce development and making career connections early is so critically important. We believe that as well, and so CTE really does that in the summer months. Allows students to come out and participate and get some hands-on experience in what a career and one of those career clusters might entail. Then we have 180 students, that is up from about 150 last year, participating in our summer youth band. A couple of years ago, we took that over from the Sioux Falls Parks and Rec Department, and we continue to grow that program. The students have 18 practices, and then throughout the summer, they have three concerts that they'll be participating in as well. Here is a picture of that ELL CTE camp. They participated in welding. You can see the young woman on the right-hand side showing off the birdhouse that she made in the welding class. They did some video production, they got their hands dirty in the kitchen with culinary. They had some classroom time and also focused on basic health careers as well. So giving those students the opportunity to see themselves in a career far into the future. At the high school, things maybe get a little less fun, more academic. I don't know if you want to say that or not, but at the high school, we have ELL High School Summer School for 130 students, and that entails six credit-bearing classes, so that students who may be farther behind on their credits, that they have additional opportunity to access some of those credit-bearing classes. The high school ELL Summer Camp as well, similar to what the middle school is doing. Driver's Education, beware, 320 students will be out on the roads this summer alone, participating in 30 hours of classroom instruction and six hours of behind-the-wheel time in addition to six hours of observation time. So want to remind our traveling public to watch for those young drivers on the road. It's critically important that they have the experiences and learn the proper rules of the road. Connections, we have 250 students at three locations. Connections is a class for incoming freshmen. They can earn .5 high school credits. It's a focus on math and reading and really getting them acclimated to the high school setting so that when they come in, they already have some credit under their belt, giving them a jump start and making certain that they have a successful start to gathering their credits needed for graduation. We have in-person summer school over at Lincoln High School, 54 students are participating in speech and PE. Several years ago, we tried to deliver speech online and PE online. Those are just better in-person classes, of course. So we continue to have that option for, for students. And then the online summer school classes, we have 70 classes we offer, and 257 students are enrolled. So we have a biology or a science teacher that's doing Biology I, Biology II, the sciences area. So they might have six students in an online class and eight students in another online class. So we're able to help students continue to get credits over the summer as well. These are programs that don't necessarily have a number associated with them. Of course, we have athletic camps, the soccer camps, the football camps, basketball at our high schools. Middle School Running Start, I'm hearing from the middle school principals, anywhere from 70 students to 300 students participate in Running Start, and that's a back-to-school program, again, to help transition those students and get them off to a good start. Can't forget our marching bands. While you typically think August 1 or around that time. I took a walk around the block last week, and I heard the percussion, I assume from Lincoln High School, readily working on their rhythms already, so certainly they're honing their skills as well. And then we have, our high schools have summer theater presentations as well. And we want to remind our community that there are lots of great opportunities to attend those summer theater productions that our students put on as well. So if you just totaled those, it would be opportunities for a little more than 3,000 students this summer. And I think that's pretty great when you look at our total overall population and then all of the community partners we have out there, like MB and other organizations, the Scouts, and just a variety of folks that are out there doing great things for kids throughout the summer months, giving them experiences as well. So certainly, we're a player in that, but we appreciate the partnerships of other organizations that are, are doing that as well. So just wanted to give you that snapshot into summer learning. Again, not a comprehensive view, but I would say, I hope you agree that that's pretty comprehensive as well. Any questions?
Questions for, for Deanna.
I'll be at Kovalake on Thursday, putting worms on hooks and taking the little fish off.
I'm not sure why they didn't ask me to put worms on hooks and take fish off.
Pretty sure I know why.
Okay. Well, they probably knew why as well.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Todd, they haven't asked you to help with driver's ed, though, have they?
Uh, they asked me to take it again.
Certified instructors are, are. Our program is a certified program, so.
That's very wise. All right, thank you, Deanna. We do have two conflicts of interest that were presented to us in our notes. So I'd ask for a motion to approve the two conflicts of interest.
So, second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries. Motion for approval of the consent agenda, please.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, that motion carries. And supplemental consent agenda, approval of claims to Sanford, motion for approval, please.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. And two abstentions on that, Board Member Mickelson and Board Member Ryder. And we are on to the reports of the superintendent, Dr. Maher.
Thank you. The first report tonight is a report that comes to us from Dr. Boyson in Curriculum Services, is specifically about a new reading program called Systematic Instruction in Phonological Awareness, Phonics and Sight Words abbreviated to be SIPs. Dr. Boyson?
Thanks, Dr. Maher. SIPs, a program that we implemented last year. Tonight, I'm here to give you an update on that first year of the SIPs program and the pilot program. It follows our strategic plan, priority one, student outcomes, priority statement one, really working on providing rigorous, effective, engaging curriculum instruction for all students to emphasize growth and reduce that achievement gap. When we look at that strategic initiative, everything we do comes around our strategic plan. So the Sioux Falls District's committed to finding creative ways and innovative ways to improve literacy instruction and reduce the achievement gap by maximizing time for instruction for struggling readers. During the fall of 2018, the Sioux Falls District implemented two different intervention models, utilizing the SIPs intervention curriculum. Within the SIPs intervention curriculum, benchmark and mastery assessments are provided to determine the specific skills students are missing as well as the explicit lessons the students need to fill the gaps and focus on foundational skills. The SIPs benchmark and mastery assessments were used to measure students' growth and progress throughout the year. We had two different models. Model one was implemented at Hawthorne and Terry Redlin. This model had a dedicated teacher to the SIPs instruction for 1st grade students who scored below the 41st percentile on their Fall NWA MAP assessment. Students received 200 minutes of SIPs instruction per week. And the 1st grade team used the flooding model of intervention to support all students. So that grade-level team, they're all able to work together to support those students. Model two was implemented at Cleveland and Garfield. The implementation model included the curriculum, but that curriculum was delivered by the classroom teachers. So within that classroom setting, those classroom teachers delivered that SIPs intervention. Both models had the support of the Literacy TOSA. The success of the SIPs implementation was due to having the access, that access to that Literacy TOSA. And that TOSA was able to provide side-by-side coaching so that she was able to go into that classroom, sit down next to the teacher that was providing the intervention, whether in the classroom or the SIPs teacher, and really watch how that curriculum was implemented and looked at the fidelity of that to make sure that all those foundational pieces were in place. Because this curriculum is very different than anything that we've done before, and it's, so it's very prescriptive, and you need to follow that. Once we identified any gaps or if students were stuck at a certain point, that Literacy TOSA could sit next to that teacher, and they could tweak the delivery of the content and go back into that guide and really make sure that we were following it, and then the student continued to make gains. So strong, committed leadership in the building, making sure that professional development plus strong, comprehensive data to look at how everything was going in that building to move those students forward. So now, I'm excited to share the results. Model one, so we had, Model one, again, we had the SIPs teachers dedicated to those, Terry Redlin and Hawthorne. They provided 40-minute lessons to groups of five or six students, and the progress was monitored using the SIPs benchmark and mastery assessments to really look at that. And we measured their growth in quarters, because if you think of our school year in, as in four quarters, we expect a student to make a year's growth in a year's time or four quarters' growth in a year's time. And so that's how we measured the progress of this implementation. So at Hawthorne, we started with the original cohort of 32 students, two moved out, so 30 students in that cohort. 18 of those students, or 60%, are on grade level right now as measured with SIPs. And so what's that percentage in quarters? 27 students, or 90% of those students made four or more quarters' growth in a year's time. So remember, our students started, in the 41st percentile, many of these students started knowing three letter sounds and maybe eight to 10 sight words. So they measured right at kindergarten, first quarter, end of first quarter. And so a lot of them have made four quarters or more growth, catching them up, because they need to make four or more quarters' growth to catch up. So great growth for those students. Terry Redlin, another one with a SIPs teacher, started with 37 students. We ended with 34 in that original cohort. 16 students, or 47%, are on grade level as measured by SIPs. Or 100% of the students made four or more quarters' growth. So 100% of the students at Terry Redlin in that cohort made a year's growth in a year's time or more. Model two, Model two was the classroom delivery of the SIPs at Cleveland and Garfield. The classroom teacher provided a 30-minute intervention for those students, and then the progress was monitored in the same way, again, being reported by quarters. At Cleveland, we started with 66 students, and we're able to serve more students because it's in the classroom with, within that grade-level team. 10 students, or 16% of them, are on grade level, or 50% or 50 students, excuse me, or 82% of them made four or more quarters' growth. At Garfield, we started with 24 students. 16 students, or 84% of them, made four or more quarters' growth in that, in that year's time. And I have a graphic here that we can show how those students moved through. Remember, those students were identified at the beginning of the year knowing three letters and sounds, eight to 10 high-frequency words. Throughout the year, the students had access to Tier One, so they had that classroom collaborative literacy instruction along with the SIPs instruction, which uses your Tier Two, your intervention. And that combination, they work really well together, because what I learn in SIPs, I can apply in my Being a Reader program, in that classroom instruction. And those students' skills grew from four to eight quarters' growth in one year's time. And if you look on the graph, the blue are our SIPs teachers' buildings, so that's your Hawthorne and your Terry Redlin. And we have one student, or 1%, in the four quarters. And everybody else at Hawthorne and Terry Redlin grew five or more quarters throughout that program, throughout the year. And then the purple and the red show you the other model, Model Two at Garfield and Terry Redlin. Nice growth there, but we moved more students further with access to that SIPs teacher. So strengths of the SIPs Year One pilot. Students had access to Tier One and Tier Two instruction, so they had that classroom, Being a Reader instruction through collaborative literacy, and that two-tier intervention SIPs instruction. And that combination helped support those students to move them forward, four or more quarters' growth in a year's time. They had access to that Literacy TOSA, and that Literacy TOSA, it's an important position because she's able, she not only provided PD for that SIPs teacher, for the classroom teachers, for the building administration, and the building coaches. And all of that combined helped to support the students, and really being able to tweak and change things as needed on the spot. The teachers could reach out to her and say, "What's, you know, this child's not moving as fast as we would expect," or "They're stuck." And she could go in, do that side-by-side coaching with that teacher, and able to move them forward. And then the SIPs teacher, just that intervention, that small group instruction, moving those students forward. And it's really building those foundational skills. So that SIPs intervention, when utilized with the Tier, as Tier Two with Being a Reader, results indicate students had access to the SIPs teacher achieved more than one year's growth in a year's time, closing that foundational gap. Realizing the benefits of access to additional teacher dedicated to SIPs intervention in alignment with research on best practices on reading intervention, the SIPs teacher pilot will be expanded for the fall of 2019 to six additional schools, meaning they'll have a teacher in those schools. First grade students who score below the 41st percentile in that Fall 2019 NWA MAP will have access to that teacher. And up here, I have the buildings listed that will have additional, will have that teacher. Cleveland and Garfield are on the list again because they didn't have that SIPs teacher. I collected a few comments from students, teachers, and parents. And so, comment from a student, "Very excited, they got to the year-end NWA MAP assessment," and it reads it to them, but all of a sudden, this little friend's taking the assessment, and he yells across the room, "Hey, I can read this!" And his little friend across the room says, "Me too!" And so they're just so excited about that. So not only having it read, but they can read it. And then we had a teacher say that the SIPs professional development was for them. It really helped develop their practice, their capacity. And this is from Cleveland, "It's awesome to see the whole school working together for the education of every child. They just encompass that, and everybody's working together to help support every child." And Terry Redlin, "Our 1st graders are further ahead than they've ever been before." And so 1st grade teachers are so excited to send those 1st graders on to 2nd grade. And those teachers are very excited because they know they'll be able to move them that much further. And then a parent at Hawthorne came in and crying. And then a parent at Hawthorne came in and crying to the classroom teacher and said, "I don't know what you did, but my child is so excited about reading," and she was just very, very thankful for that. So just a great program with great results for students. So the summary, the SIPs instruction, when provided by a dedicated SIPs teacher as Tier Two intervention along with Being a Reader, instruction by the classroom teacher shows benefits for students. Students identified to participate in the SIPs groups began the year knowing three letter sounds and eight to 10 high-frequency words, which is equivalent to the end of first quarter in kindergarten. Throughout the year, students had access to Tier One instruction and Tier Two intervention, and the combination of the two supported the students' growth. Students' reading skills grew from four to eight quarters within one year's time, closing the academic gap for these students. Another strength of the SIPs pilot was implementation due to having access to a literacy TOSA. The TOSA was able to provide side-by-side coaching and professional development for coaches, teachers, and administration on reading instruction and best practices. And then with that, I ask for acknowledgement of the instruction of the SIPs program, the Year One update, and I'll stand by for any questions.
Questions for Dr. Boyson.
First, I just want to thank you. I know when literacy in action was ended, there was a lot of fear of change of what we were going to do to replace that and hopefully find a successful program, and it looks like we have. So thank you very much for keeping at it and finding this. And my question would be, you know, this is going to six schools. I'm going to challenge us as a board to look at how we can maybe find funding, because currently, we had CEIS at eight schools, so two of those schools won't, and not necessarily funding those schools, but are there two other schools we should be funding this SIPs program at, which would be an additional cost of $154,000, I think, is what, $65,000 per school for staffing and then $12,000 per school for curriculum, correct?
Right.
So more of a challenge to us as board members to kind of sit back and look at our budget to see if we can possibly find that for going forward, so that we're keeping it going forward and so forth. I think it's important to keep it at these six schools, our type of schools, but maybe looking at if we can do it at two other schools as well.
Yeah, I think early results look very positive. I think what I would be interested in seeing is, maybe this is part of the plan, but when they take their MAP test again in the fall, to say after the summer months and after the, you know, first month or so of school, where are these same kids at each of these schools for both models? Where are they at now as second graders? I would love to see that information, just to see a little bit longer-term impact. Right now, we're just targeting these first graders, so the second graders won't get these same interventions, correct?
Correct.
The second grade teacher will pick up with wherever they start off the year. So I would be very interested to know where they are at in that October-ish timeframe.
And many of the schools, you know, the pilot was just around the first grade, but many of of those four schools, they let, that one comment, it was intervention for the whole building. When they saw the results coming out of first grade, it was contagious.
Sure.
And so the staff received the professional development, but they're implementing it as a classroom teacher.
Sure.
Because they see the results for students. And we had fifth grades make great gains in those, filling in those gaps for kids.
Right.
And so really looking at how that helps to support them.
Yeah, and I think if foundationally, if it's a great program, those are transferable to any grade level. And so whatever our teachers in that same building or even other buildings are able to learn from that, even without the specific of the curriculum or the TOSA or any of those other skills, if there are things that can be learned.
Right.
And shared that are free, just based on a teacher in service or something, I think that everybody wins in that scenario. So yeah, I'll be anxious to see.
And we're really anxious to watch these students also as they move through, because when those foundational skills are strong, the slide isn't as, they should be, they should stay where they're at.
Right. Now, some of these students could also be participating in summer climb, correct?
Correct.
So it might be interesting to see those students who finished with SIPs and didn't do summer climb, and those who finished and did, and was there a difference, and what was that?
Because we're using SIPs in summer climb, so that's another benefit for those two.
Yeah, so I think that would be an interesting correlation to see. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Dr. Boyson? All right, thank you. Very good report. Could I get a motion to acknowledge the report, please?
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion. And TOSA, just teacher on special assignment, you probably said that, and I've gotten used to hearing it, but I don't suppose some of our new parents are familiar with that particular jargon. So a teacher on special assignment, which is a great thing that we can offer to help our kids with improving reading skills. Very good.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, that motion carries. Next report.
Our next report is a Human Resources and Finance Enterprise Resource Planning Software Conversion Report. This is a really, really big thing. As we met with the media today, there were hardly any questions for Mike, and one of the things I said when it was done was, this is a really big issue, but it's not real sexy. So as you, as you look at this, it might not grab you from a charismatic standpoint, but from the substance that this will have within our district, this is as important as any report as you'll, as you'll receive. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mike Christopherson from ITS.
Thank you, and I'll try to make it as charismatic as I can here.
I'm looking forward to that.
All right. Thank you for the opportunity to provide detail about the Human Resource and Finance Enterprise Resource Planning Software Conversion. Tonight's report will provide a 10,000-foot view of the process and status of this conversion, and give you a glimpse of the great collaborative work that staff from HR, finance, payroll, purchasing, administration, clerical, and IT are doing to successfully convert one of the district's largest programs and databases. Converting enterprise resource planning, or I'll refer to it as ERP, since I use a lot of acronyms, and Dr. Boyson got to use SIPs, so I'm going to use ERP. System resembles moving into a new home. There's a lot of planning, work, and decision-making in determining the who, what, when, where, why, and how this large project is going to be accomplished. And just like every item in a home must be accounted for and moved, every piece of our system is affected by this conversion. It is also a great time to clear out those things that don't need to be converted, for those of you that are pack rats, that it's time to clean house a little bit. So let's start with our current ERP system and why we're moving away from it. The Sioux Falls School District has utilized TIES Enterprise Software as a robust human resource payroll, finance, purchasing, and regulatory tracking application for over 13 years now. The district has extensive database connections, automation, and workflows that have developed, been developed to streamline a lot of our processes. So why are we moving away from it? The district was notified in January of 2017 that TIES Enterprise Software was scheduled to go end-of-life and discontinue support and updates. So you could say it was time to move because our house, we had come to know over the past 13 years, would no longer be there. Time to hit the housing market. A combination of HR, finance, payroll, purchasing, administration, and IT staff reviewed the essential needs and other ideal components of this new software. The district conducted a full business process review of our current processes. We reviewed workflows for efficiencies, and we documented all the outcomes. Several enterprise applications were reviewed to look fully at an integrated system that would provide our essential needs and connect to our other core databases that we use within the district. And the RFP for Power Schools eFinance software was chosen as the new enterprise resource planning software for the district. Security of the application and corresponding databases and connections were looked at in detail, and then we executed on those contracts. We had completed our house hunt and put the house under contract. It was time to pack at this point, and this meant accounting for each and every aspect of that system. Information and technology staff began preparing servers for application deployment, which included both live and training databases. The project kickoff laid out the scope of the project, officially starting the district's support of two ERP systems running at the same time as of December. System design identified manually-entered data versus data that could be exported from our legacy system, verified, and imported into the new system. System administration rounded out the project setup phase. Staff from HR, finance, payroll, purchasing, and IT were continued to work through an eight-phase training process. Staff are attending various trainings of overall planned 62.5 days of training while updating the databases accordingly throughout this process. Integration of integral existing data software such as time management, substitute management, employee onboarding, and benefits is also being developed to import and export data between the systems for interoperability. On the screen are the modules that have been integrated into this project. EFinance will be the district ERP of record as of July 1 of 2019, so right, just a few weeks from now. All requisitions for purchases that are being made for fiscal year 20 are currently being done within the new system already, so that part's already live. Parallel payrolls will be conducted here in June, we just got through it actually, and July to verify the accuracy of both pre- and post-go-live systems. Continued reporting, integration, and development will take place after go-live to provide data interoperability and increase workflows and efficiencies. So in summary, the district ERP application conversion is really a tremendous undertaking for one of our biggest programs and databases within the district. Staff from HR, finance, payroll, purchasing, admin, clerical, and IT have collaboratively worked and trained to ensure that the district continues to provide an accurate, secure, robust, and efficient ERP application. Each item in our system has been carefully bubble-wrapped, packed, and ready for the big move. As we near go-live, we hope to make this house or application our home ERP system. Thank you, and I would ask the board to acknowledge the ERP application conversion report, and I'd stand by for any questions that you have.
Any questions for Mr. Charisma?
Do you get permission with that? With this move?
Nah, I don't think so.
That's a big no.
Yep.
All right.
Just a huge undertaking by a lot of departments in the district, so thank you for everyone. I'm sure this is in addition to every air normal job, so thank you for all doing this, and I pray for patience for everybody while they're working out.
It was a great report. This isn't the most exciting stuff, but it is what keeps all of our employees paid. It helps with the hiring process with all of the accounting and everything. So it is, it's a huge part of what we do, but so much of what, of what you've done, Mike, since you came, is under the radar. But I hope you know how much the board and the school district appreciate the professionalism that you have brought to your position. So I don't, I don't know that everyone that we had hired, when you were hired, could have undertaken this and gotten the house in order the way you have, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, a motion to acknowledge the report, please.
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries. And we're on to policy. Kate?
Yes. First set of policies are up for review, revise. I'll take them separately. We've got Policy BE, School Board Meetings. We updated language to include meetings of another public body or when board members attend a press conference. Language regarding executive meetings held to discuss eligibility and include language to match state law of certain records, not open to inspection and copying. So I move to approve the review revision of Policy BE.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries.
The second one is BEDB, its agenda. We updated language to include events hosted by a non-governmental entity when a quorum of the board is invited and public policy may be discussed. So I move to approve the review revision of BEDB.
Second.
Okay, discussion on that. Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, that motion carries.
And the third one is BEDH, Public Participation at School Board Meetings. We updated language to match current practice, so I move to approve the review revision of BEDH.
Second.
I, I have an, I'll comment. I'd like to add, after residents in line eight, a comma, and the additional language property taxpayers, so that we can cover somebody who might not be a resident of our school district but might own commercial property in our district and allow them as well.
And then with that change, is that...
We categorize it to a first reading for BEDH, yeah.
Okay, so you'll change the motion.
So I will change the motion for first reading of BEDH with the requested language.
Thank you.
And withdraw the original motion, and then, Todd?
Oh, second.
Okay.
Amended.
Okay, very good. So we've got an amended policy BEDH, and it's first read, and then that'll be out for the public to look at over the next 30 days, so motion and a second.
That'll then come back at the second board meeting in July.
Right, right, okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, that motion carries as first read.
Okay, and then we have several policies up for second reading. They've been out on our website for the last 30 days or so, and we'll review these one by one as well. We have Policy EHAA and its accompanying regulation, data breach of personal or protected identifiable information. This created a new policy pertaining to personal or protected identifiable, identifiable information. I move to approve the second reading of EHAA and its accompanying regulation. Second.
Got a motion and a second, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, that motion carries.
And then we have Policy GBEB, Code of Conduct, included a language, a language included audio or video recordings of an employee, supervisor, or other person without their knowledge as unethical conduct. I move to approve the second reading of GBEB.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, that motion carries.
And I have Policy KEB and its accompanying regulation, public concerns, complaints about personnel, and language updated to update resolution options when complaints are received by a principal or supervisor about an employee. And I move to approve the second reading of KEB and its accompanying regulation.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, that motion carries.
And we have Policy IMDB and its accompanying regulation, flag displays and patriotic activities. It added language about the national motto being displayed in our schools to comply with South Dakota state statute. Is there a motion to approve this policy? So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, discussion? And I'll be happy to start the conversation about this. The national motto is the national motto, and I have... The national motto is the national motto, and I have, for nearly 12 years, been a strong advocate for local control in our schools. And I have, I have an issue with the state passing a law that requires us to display a particular sign in the entryway of every one of our buildings. And I believe that, number one, that does take away local control. Number two, it doesn't come with any provision for funding for those signs, either for them to be made or to be installed. I would be opposed to having the school district spend a penny on having those signs put up. In, in my opinion, we are the public schools rather than the, the sign that the state law requires. And again, this is my personal view, the sign that we should have in the lobby of every one of our schools should be a sign that says, "All are welcome here." And again, my opinion is that that should be done in rainbow colors if we're going to be totally inclusive of every student, every family, every belief that the, that the people that we are, we are demanded to educate. And I think, I just, I think that this is wrong on many, many levels, and I couldn't possibly support it. So, any other discussion?
I agree with everything that you have said, Kent, and I appreciate your words. You probably said it a lot more eloquently than I could, but I think about the size of our district and the number of students we serve and the diversity of the students we serve, and I would rather us be all-inclusive as well rather than one phrase that might not encompass everyone's beliefs.
I don't disagree with anything that anybody has said. I think my concern is, is what is the risk of not following? What is the state law? I don't want to pay for them, and I don't necessarily agree that that's the phrase that should be hanging in our schools. I just don't know what the risk is of our, our board or our district saying, "Thanks, but no thanks." That would be my question.
And I, I had that same question, and I couldn't even find anything in state law, but I'm not as, as well-versed as it is maybe.
If they chose, they could bring a writ of mandamus to mandate that we do follow the state law.
Say that again?
A writ of mandamus would, could be brought by the state through their, either Attorney General's office or local to mandate that we follow SDCL on that.
And as always, I understand what writ of mandamus means, but you might want to explain that.
SIPs, so it's Latin for basically mandating, making us follow the law that is put on books. We're not, we're not following the law, so that the state would come and say, "You must follow the law," and so they'll bring that. So, an injunction is when they're, you're stopping you, they're trying to stop you from doing something, and mandamus is making you do something that you're supposed to be doing under the South Dakota Code of Fine Law.
One of the things, if you'll allow me to jump in, Mr. Alberti, is we would, we would still follow the state law even if you would not pass this policy. I just, I want you to know administratively, we would, we would still follow the law so that while the, the policy is here, so that we put it in, put it in place to show how we'll implement state law, but as, as administrators, unless, as a board, you tell us not to follow state law, we'll still follow the state law regardless of any, any personal feelings on the issue.
Right, so if, if the board tells you not to follow state law, you would actually be the one breaking the law. We'd be okay.
I mean, I'd have to get into some other sort of writ here.
Yeah, okay, all right.
That's passing the buck.
Well, I, I won't vote for it. I, I just, I, I can't. It's my personal conviction, I can't, can't support it, can't vote in favor of it, and I would, I'm going off the board, but I'd love to be the one that tests this with, with the state to find out what, what we can and can't be required to do. And if that requires a lawsuit down the line, I've been paid for being on the school board, I can take some of that money and help support that, but, all right.
And I want to reiterate, I hope, you know, our schools are inclusive and we will, and I agree with you, we, we should not be trying to eliminate anyone from our school. That's the whole purpose of what the public schools are for, so I hope in how we do this, we find a way that it makes, what we publish is, is doing that in some manner.
Okay, any other discussion? If not, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, aye. And I heard three ayes, so that does carry.
Okay, we're on to Policy JK and its accompanying regulation, Student Discipline, Suspension and Expulsion. Updates language to include discipline for school disruptions, vapor products, threats of school shootings, and cleanup consequence section there. So, I move to approve the second reading of JK and its accompanying regulation.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, that motion carries.
And next one is JJI and its accompanying regulations, Student Athletics and Activities, and it updates language to current practice. So, I move to approve the second reading of JJI and its accompanying regulation.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, that motion carries.
And the last one is JCA and its accompanying regulation, Assignment of, Assignment of Students to School, Open Enrollment and Non-Resident Students, and it updates language to address verification language and class capacity.
Second.
Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, that motion carries. And that brings us to the end of the meeting. Anybody have anything else to bring before the board? If not, could I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We are adjourned, thank you.